Meeting will now come to order. Our city treasurer, John Riley, will lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I always want to sing after that. My country to the...
Could you call the roll, Mr. Clerk?
Dave Abdullah.
Here.
Thomas Berry.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Margaret Horvath.
Here.
Joseph Kozinski.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The next item on the agenda is the presentation for Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton for her achievement of a Level One status with the Michigan Municipal League. Mayor?
Our adjourned mayor, Jack O'Reilly, is actually the president of Michigan Municipal League, but City Council of Dearborn meets the same night we meet, so he could not make it. And he asked that I make the presentation. So on behalf of the Michigan Municipal League, one of our own, Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton, has received the Level One Education Award. And I asked Kelly Warren from the Michigan Municipal League the significance. And Kelly said as follows. "The Elected Officials Academy is a voluntary education and recognition program which was created in 1997 by a board of elected officials working with the Michigan Municipal League staff. Level One is the education award. The individuals graduating from Level One have completed 25 credits in the academy." Councilmember Lisa Hicks Clayton is one of 17 people who were recognized in Lansing last month for completing Level One this year. And our congratulations to your council members. So congratulations, Councilman.
Councilwoman, take you. Thank you for all you do. Great accomplishment.
The next item on the agenda... Wait till she... The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Berry.
Councilwoman Berry.
Councilwoman Berry.
You never know.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Berry.
Motion to approve the agenda... What are you laughing at?
I'm not looking at him the rest of the night.
Support.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the March 22, 2016 City Council meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Yes, I move to approve the minutes for March 22, 2016, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as outlined in 4A.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Muscat. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is fund transfers and current claims. Mr. Chair. Councilman Berry.
Motion to approve current claims 6-1 through 6-26.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I had some questions on some of these.
Councilman Abdullah.
Okay, the first one is on number 6-6. And this would be for Bill Zimmerman, if you don't mind? I just had a question in regards to why are we buying water from the city of Dearborn? Because I know we primarily get it from Detroit. Why, in this particular case, is it Dearborn?
We still have quite a few houses that receive their water from the city of Dearborn and vice versa. We also have sewage the same way. They're still connected to the Dearborn water mains.
How long has that been around for?
Ever. We've been a township that goes back to township days.
So it's just a small section of Dearborn Heights, then?
Yeah, there's not a lot. I mean, a lot of it's in the south end of Dartmouth, some of our bordering streets.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I had a couple more. I had on 6-18. I just wanted to get a little bit of a clarification in regards to the charge on that one. The difference between that one and 6-20, because they seem to be the same thing almost. I want to see what the differences was. It was all the same dates. Everything was the same except the invoice number.
I'd have to see a copy. I don't have my full...
6-18 and 6-21.
Right. 6-20. 6-20.
Administration. It's Water Design and then 6-20 is Water Main Improvement.
CDVG.
Yeah, both of them are.
There's a 4,499 amount. That's for the fiscal year 14 Water Main. Administration. And the other is the 6-18.
It's Administration as well.
Yeah, okay, that's for the... Well, that's the fiscal year 15-16 Water Main, so it's the two separate Water Main projects. That would be plans and specs for the 15 Water Main. So that's 14 Water Main and 15 Water Main. There's two separate Water Main projects going on right now at the same time, right? So at different levels of completion or preliminary bids and specs, et cetera. So I believe later today on the agenda is the award for the fiscal year 15 Water Main.
Councilman Muscat.
I don't know if this would be Mr. Zimmerman or what, but on 6-17, I see the services from Wade Trim, but it doesn't tell me where that service is, where we're performing those services. At least I don't think that's here. Let's put it that way.
Part is for the ending permitting, NPDS permit. And then it says revalidating FEMA-Loma request.
For flood insurance.
Okay. I didn't know where it's from.
Yeah, we provide assistance for our residents. If they can get out of flood insurance, then we help them.
Okay. I was just curious. Council, any other questions?
Well, I don't know. Councilwoman Abdullah have any more?
No, that's it for right now.
Oh, okay.
Councilwoman Horvath?
No, I'm okay. I didn't know if he was done.
She's keeping you honest. No, I'm done. She's keeping me honest. I called...
You're making me work at this job. I'm not liking that you are.
Any further questions on fund transfers or current claims? Hearing none. It's been moved and...
Wait, I don't think we had a motion.
I made the motion.
Moved and supported to item 6.
1 through 6-26?
1 through 6-26. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it.
I think for the clerk that was Mr. Kozinski that...
I've got it. Thank you, Kozinski.
The next item on the agenda is from Mayor Piletko. Guardian Alarm Monthly Fee.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move, council concur with the mayor regarding his request to approve the Guardian Security Monthly Fee of $188 for the original contract approved under the broad umbrella of motion 16-061.
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, also from Mayor Piletko. St. Sebastian Parish 2016 Spring Festival Parade. Councilwoman Horvath.
I didn't say anything.
What in the heck is wrong with you?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move, council concur with the city of Dearborn Heights Administration, including fire and police who have approved their attendance to the meeting to offer services as needed with regard to the St. Sebastian Parish 2016 Spring Festival to be held on Saturday, May 21, 2016.
Support.
Support by Councilman...
I didn't know we were going to get entertainment here tonight either.
Councilman Berry. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is from our clerk Walter Percevich. Notice of public hearing for proposed 2016-2017 corporate fund budget.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move, council concur with the city clerk Walter Percevich regarding a scheduled of public hearing on May 10, 2016, and also the 2016-2017 city proposed budget as defined in 9A. The text of the proposal is on the backside of the 9A sheet.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? The budget has to be adopted by May 24, 2016. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda from Councilman Ray Muscat. Appointment to the General Government Pension Committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
I move to appoint Councilman Ray Muscat as a city council appointment to the general pension board as outlined in 9B.
Second.
Second by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Or Councilman Berry.
There needs to be some clarification on this, and please forgive me, correct, Councilman? But as outlined in 9B, the request states as a council liaison, not a board member of that council. So there needs to be some clarification that 9B should read pension board member rather than city council liaison. If I'm not correct, somebody please correct me.
No, you're right. Mr. Chairman, my understanding is the appointment is for... It's a council appointment as a board member, yes. There's one position available on that board, and that is by council appointment. So the motion, we can do a friendly amendment, that is to support, to move, to appoint as the council body to the general pension board as a member.
Any further discussion?
Are you asking to omit support as city council liaison?
Correct. Yes.
Then 9B needs to be amended to read that if the clerk...
Well, yeah, that'll be the motion to... It's been moved and supported. Councilman Muscat, you're okay with the amendment?
Yes.
I had some brief discussion with Councilman, with Treasurer Riley. There's one position, correct?
Right, and the other council appointed member, and I think you also may want to add the term, which I think would expire December 31 of next year.
Expire December 31.
Seventeen.
Mr. Chairman, it's essentially a position for serving the remainder of an unexpired term on the general government pension board.
So are you in...
Add that to the...
That amendment to expire December 31, 2017?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? No. So there's four yeses and... Wait, let's... You were yea or nay?
Well, I wanted to get a clarification. I had understood that there was two people running for the position.
There is.
There's two nominations.
Okay, but the other nominee was not announced as of yet.
No, that's the next motion.
Excuse me, can we do that at the... So for clarification purposes?
Mr. Chairman, by rights, these both probably should have been together.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm going to ask.
You can't vote when you've only presented one and not the second as of yet.
The two nominees, just like we do for the council chair. Councilman Ray Muscat and Councilman Kozinski has nominated Vince McCary, and they both should be thrown in the hat for a vote.
I agree.
You think so?
Oh, yes.
I mean, it's an agenda item that is just requesting a position.
It should have been both.
He either has the four here, but neither one of them may have the four.
You're right, they might not have a four.
Neither one of them may, so they should be taken separately, in my opinion. They're two separate council items. They're two separate agenda items. I don't want to complicate it, but if we want to get technical about it, if clarification from a corporate attorney...
Well, my sense would be that it should be treated as an election. In other words, both names should be considered at the same time.
Both names? There we go. So...
Or go through a process of nominating and then selecting, but you already have the two names and then...
And our comptroller, Vince McCary, is out of town, so...
May I make an amendment to the... Hold on, so we had our original vote on the original motion, and that was... We had... I was asking Councilman Abdullah what his vote was, and he asked for some clarification.
Right. And that's what we're trying to determine at this particular point. If there's two people running, it doesn't make sense to vote for the first one.
Right.
And then, right when you're done, then you get a second candidate. Well, if you've already voted, it doesn't make sense.
Well, yeah, arguably, then the second candidate is moved. But the other alternative is to move it to a study session and wait till Vince gets back.
No, Vince McCary... Oh, I'm sorry. Why are we waiting for Vince to come back? He's already agreed to this. So why do we have to wait for him to come back? We just throw both the names in the hat and take a vote.
I agree.
Then can we amend the original motion and ask that we combine 9B and 9C for consideration?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, well, let's do... Make her the motion. Do you want to withdraw your motion or...
Well, we can amend it. We do a friendly amendment, put both names in the hat.
Well, you'll have to withdraw the first one.
Okay. So I would rescind that motion. The original motion, we'll rescind that. The new motion would be...
Why don't you... You suppose you could move to table it?
Well, no, I think we can vote tonight.
We can vote tonight.
We can vote tonight, but we need to have discussion, I would imagine. We will.
Well, this would just give some time for everybody to talk about a little further before... So how would you word a new motion?
Well, I would word it, we would move to, well, have the election with the two names that have been presented to us of interest. That would be Councilman Muscat and Vincent McCary. So we would have an election to vote and fill the vacancy. It's one vacancy that is a council appointment. Traditionally on this board, there is five members. There's two that are appointed by council, two by employees, and then the fifth one is what Councilman Kozinski serves at large. So we need to fill.
Jack, give me one second. Is there any rush to fill this position? I mean, if we waited two weeks to...
Our meeting is next Tuesday, so we don't have... We have an FDC, that's happened before, so it means to the pleasure of the council.
Mr. Chairman. Councilman Berry.
In my opinion, we have 9B and 9C here. We can make a motion to consider both agenda items in one motion and ask for the council to take a vote based on what we have in front of us. I think the clerk would need that verbiage, correct?
If you're going to rescind the motion...
Well, she rescinded her original.
You have to vote on the motion.
I made a motion for us to have an election with the two names.
You have to vote to rescind the motion. You already had a motion approved, so you do need to vote to rescind the motion.
We need to finish the motion.
Let's vote to rescind the motion.
I basically don't vote, because you have to have two people to vote.
Why don't we make a federal case?
Let's rescind the motion. Let's vote to rescind the motion now.
We need to vote to rescind the motion.
Right.
All in favor of rescind the motion?
Our tabling, tabling the...
No tabling. This motion is on the floor, Mr. Chair. We rescind the motion, we have a support, we need to vote.
That's right.
All right, all those in favor of rescinding the original motion made by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton, supported by Councilman Muscat to appoint... Councilman Muscat to the General Government Pension Committee, please say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Chair. Councilman Berry.
I would like to make... I'd like to make a motion that would combine agenda items 9B and 9C to determine the election of a council member or a person to the pension board.
Second.
Second by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, Councilman Kozinski?
There was one person who was nominated. The second person needs to be also nominated.
They just did.
We just combined them. You combined them, both of them.
All right, if that's satisfactory procedurally, then there's no problem.
All right, all those in favor of combining council motions 9B and 9C, please state aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. All right, let's do this. All those in favor of Councilman Muscat, please put your hand out like we did for the... All right, all those in favor of Councilman Kozinski?
No, no. Vincent McCary.
Councilman...
McCary.
Vince McCary comptroller, Vince McCary.
There it is. It's four. Vince McCary has it.
Vince McCary, our comptroller, is the appointment. The next item on the agenda is from Councilman Muscat, item 9D. Newspaper, the littering of the city with the newspapers in the driveway. Mr. Chair. Councilman Muscat. I ask for a... You know, I'm going to read the letter here. "With this letter, I am viewing my opinion with the ongoing problem of littering being done by Detroit newspapers while trying to increase their home delivery subscriptions to those who do not already receive home delivery. These papers are in the form of advertisements and not newspapers. With these deliveries, our littering ordinances are being violated as outlined in chapter 316, 319, 324, 1731, 1752, and 2251. I would request that Dearborn Heights City Council ask the mayor to draft a letter signed by the mayor and city council informing the Detroit newspapers to stop the deliveries of these advertisements or face littering tickets." I spoke with the chief of police, and I know it's very difficult to go out and hand tickets at 4:00, 5:00 in the morning. But I think a letter signed by the mayor and the city council asking the Detroit newspapers to stop may go a long way in watching all of these things fly all over the place, getting blocking up our storm drains. People just don't pick them up. They don't want them. And yet they go down and they just throw them out the window.
And I know Councilman Kozinski and Councilwoman Horvath previously... Councilwoman Horvath?
Okay, this came up about two years ago.
Correct.
I believe by the same person. And all you have to do is call the Detroit newspaper conglomerate, whatever they're called, and tell them who you are and that you want... You've had a number of complaints and that you want that to stop. And they stopped it. It's been stopped for two years. Now it started up again. So I don't think the mayor and the council really have to get involved, and certainly not the police department. I think if a phone call is made to the newspaper, tell them who you are and why you're calling, it'll stop.
Mr. Chair, you know, I understand what you're saying, but we've... It really hasn't stopped in my neighborhood. It didn't stop. It continues. And it continues, you know, no matter what city you go to, they're doing it. If I drove down Cherry Hill Road at 4:00 in the afternoon or 4:00 in the morning, and I threw papers out the window, and there was a police car there, I would get a ticket for littering. It's no different. No different at all. At least we give them the opportunity to stop it themselves. And I'm not saying give the carrier the ticket. It's the Detroit newspapers who are requesting them to do this.
Basically putting them on notice.
Yeah, you put them on notice, that's all that we do, because it's not the... The carrier's doing his job, okay?
No, and it's advertising, and the newspaper sells those ads. And it says, oh, we distribute, we hit all these homes. And what happens is if a house is vacant, for example, then this collects...
Builds up.
But we had discussed this, and I know Councilman, Councilwoman Horvath and Councilman Kozinski...
A letter doesn't hurt a thing, and we all sign it, and everybody's united on it. It sends a message to these conglomerates to stop the bad practice. It is a bad practice. Mr. Chair.
Corporation Council, could we... Could you do a little checking into this and see what, you know, it would take for them to, you know, basically get a letter that says, hey, look, you know, we know individual people can opt out, but you're... It's becoming a problem in the city, and what type of communication we could have with the...
Unless I find that there's not a basis for it, I could just do a letter. If you just want me to do a letter, I'll just go ahead and do a letter without...
Yeah, an outline of the letter.
If you want me to report back to you, I could, but I could just go ahead and do the letter and copy mayor and council on it.
Yeah, have a discussion with...
You want me to support this motion?
Councilman Abdullah?
I just wanted to address, I'm in support with what Ray is saying. I mean, if they want to deliver these... You know, my background is marketing, so I'm all in favor of marketing, but to put them on the driveways... I mean, I get them on my driveway. Sometimes it takes me two, three days before I notice it there. And sometimes because of heavy rains or wind or whatever, it goes right into the sewer. So if they want to deliver these, there's no problem, I think, with a lot of us, but just send them right into the mailboxes instead of putting them on the driveways.
You can't do the mailboxes.
Huh? Then don't do them with those bags.
It violates all our ordinances. That's just plain simple. You throw them on... You're throwing them into the street or the driveways, or it violates an ordinance. You put them on somebody's porch, it's an ordinance violation. So just stop it. Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton?
I was just going to say, if Councilman Muscat makes the motion, I would support that, because I'll just use our neighborhood as an example. I think Friday they delivered them, and you can drive around our sub now and they're still out there, you know, because people just... They're right at the end of the driveway, they're almost in the street. Sometimes they end up in the street, and then you have other problems. And so I think, you know, if a letter is going to put them on notice, then it's a good thing to do. I still support saying, call them as well, follow up with calls.
We'll have Corporation Council look into, you know, exactly legally.
We need to have a vote on this motion.
So you have a motion, you have a support. So it's been moved and supported that...
Directing it to...
Directing it to the mayor?
To one corporate council.
The mayor and with the assistance of Corporation Council, informing the Detroit newspapers to stop the deliveries of the Saturday advertising coupons to every house. All those in favor? Any further discussion? Councilman Kozinski?
Since the letter alludes to violation of ordinance, and we have an ordinance department in place, would there be some strength in authorizing Director McIntyre to develop a statement approaching the local distributor of the paper? The reason why it stopped for a couple of years is that there was another manager of a distribution point in responsibility. And when we approached him, that distribution had discontinued. You've got a new manager now on site, and he is being pressed to advertise. The other consideration is, does this kind of suppression of advertising infringe upon...
No. And here's why. It's not political speech. They sell that advertising. They sell, you know, it's got J.C. Penney or whoever in there. They say, we hit every house. But unlike the value package you get in your mailbox that you're free to throw out or do whatever, it's thrown in the driveway. And if the house is vacant, boy, that's a sure way for a burglar to know that the house is vacant, because it's...
Mr. Chair, and it never did stop. I don't know, maybe in your neighborhood, but my neighborhood, it never stopped. I've collected, collected so many, it's, you know, I go down and I clean off the storm drains. I'm getting tired of picking them things up. And that storm drain is six, seven houses down, down on the street from me. And it just makes the neighborhood look like trash city, and I'm tired of it. And when is this, when are we gonna take back our city? We're allowing them to just litter when they want to, and it's gotta stop.
So we'll have the Corporation Council with the assistance of the-
We haven't had a vote yet.
The mayor and the, and also to Councilman Kozinski's point, and also the ordinance director to, to get some communication to Detroit Newspaper Organization. Any further discussion?
Council Chair, I wanted to say you made a really good point about the vacant homes because those things pile up, and that's like screaming empty house. So it attracts, you know, crime and other things. So certainly, your point is well taken. I agree with you 100% on taking back our city and that, but also, Council Chair, you made a great point, and I think that should be highlighted as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm entirely favorable of getting rid of them. And I think having the attorney writing the letter makes a lot of sense. I've talked to the newspapers at least a couple times, since I've had residents come in and complain. Years ago, I had, before I had a Detroit News route, I had something called the Shopping News. Now, a lot of people will not remember that newspaper, but it was distributed on everybody's house. And I think I got a half, a quarter cents per house, if I recall right, because you might have made $2 in the route. Wasn't very much, and that's why I moved to Detroit News. When I called and went tit for tat with the newspapers distributing, because it's not the free press and the news. They have a joint company that prints it and distributes it.
It's, yeah, it's, it's gonna, and it's, they, to get around the fact that they were wiping out one newspaper, they called a joint operating agreement.
So I, the one that I get, because I'm, I get my newspaper at the, at, at the local store, and I don't get subscription. Consequently, they told me that that's a way inside is that one section in the Sunday Press that they contended was news and not advertising. There's a section that deals with like clothing, purses, and they said, that's, that's news. That's not advertising. And so we went through this tit for tat in regards to that. And I'm just telling you that that's probably the same contents the old Shopping News used to use. I don't like it. They, they agreed to, as I think both council members found out, they were agreeable. They finally got a little bit apologetic. But now, he put the burden, the guy that I talked with, on, on the person distributing. And what they do is, in order to make more money, if you're going around in the neighborhood, and I don't get the pa- Gary gets the paper, then he puts the paper. I get that insert thing. You get the insert because you're not, so I'm going down there anyway. And that's hopefully, one of us will say, oh, yeah, this is pretty good. I'll subscribe to the newspaper. So that was the marketing ploy. But I think having it come from the attorney, because we've all individually, and it's not getting clear to the message. And I wish they would not do it. When we delivered the Shopping News, we used to put it on the porches. We didn't throw it on driveways. But that, that's somewhat a similarity to probably, most of the people over here wouldn't even remember the Shopping News. But that, that was a free distribution newspaper. And as was pointed out, you cannot put anything in a mailbox unless it's delivered by the postal service, or you will get billed. So they're not gonna put it in the mailbox. So I think, spoke more than I wanted to, but I think asking the attorney to direct it. Oh, the other point I was gonna make, because internally, I thought we had to see the individual throw the paper out in order to give them a ticket, that you can't just ticket.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go up the chain and hopefully get some communication with them that they'll, they'll stop. And I think there's another community that's also complaining. Any further discussion?
Well, then, as I understand it, your motion would be that you're directing me to end up preparing and sending the letter.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, Item 9E from Councilman Constan, appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Berry?
I move, City Council concur with the appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals of a Mr. Anthony Miffett on Sheehan, and the term to expire May of 2017, as outlined in 9E.
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion?
Councilman Abdullah?
Yeah, I just wanted to get, I don't know if you're the one that would know it, but I'd like to know a little bit more as far as Mr. Anthony Miffett's qualifications before I vote on this, if you don't mind.
Yeah, he's retired from Ford Motor Company. He knows the chair of the zoning board, who is Larry Zera. And he replaces a member, Aldo Gabrielli, who sickened died fairly suddenly. He worked, amongst other things, for Ford Land, so he has a background in real estate and zoning. And zoning. He was, he was, we're gonna try to make some effort for him to be here tonight, but the chairperson, Mr. Zera's got his own challenges and things going on, so apparently he wasn't able to get word to him.
But you said he worked on Ford Land Development?
He worked for Ford Land. He did some work for Ford Land in real estate.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is Item 9F from Comptroller Vince McCary, budget amendment.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton?
I move to concur with Comptroller Vincent McCary's budget amendment request as outlined in 9F.
Second.
Second by Councilman Musket. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, from Building Director Mohammed Soba, fund transfer.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Berry?
Thank you. I move, City Council concur with the fund transfer as outlined in 9G.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion?
I just had a question as to why they're moving it. Just curious. What's the purpose of the movement?
Well, initially, when we proposed the budget, and there was a five-year, sometimes factors to kick in, and then we have to adjust from one to another. This is for part-time, as a matter of fact, as you are aware, market has been very-
Very hot.
Successful, and we had to hire more part-time to do the work.
Okay, so it's an additional person you're hiring, then?
No, it's additional because the part-time we had, we limited, some of them were two days, and some of them were three days. So we had enough days to make up for it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kozinski?
Please. The four-day work week, does that influence an expenditure in excess of what the budgetary demands were at first?
Before I answered that, I'd like to have to be clarified. You get that saying, does that influence?
Yes.
Not to an extent here, I mean, like everybody else would like to go back to the five. But we're doing our job and our responsibility, we're completing it within the four-day period, just like everybody else.
Okay, so the intention of the transfer has, has not been influenced by a shorter work week causing other people to put on additional-
No, because initially, when we hired the part-time replacing the full-time, some of them were for two days and some were for three days. Now where the workload kind of increased quite a bit, so we had to add the one day or the two days for the part-time to make it the four.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, from Emergency Manager and Public Information Officer Bob Ankrapp, production of the spring/summer 2016 Dearborn Heights Today newsletter.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Musket?
I move that we concur with Emergency Manager Bob Ankrapp on, on getting a request for authorization for the design and layout, printing, and distribution services for the spring/summer 216 Dearborn Heights Today newsletter, as outlined in 9H.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Berry?
I just wanna clarify that that should not exceed $8,400.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is Item 9I from Library Director Michael McCafferty, designation of the Nolan Cemetery as a historic site. Councilwoman Horvath?
I'd like to read the whole, well, I'd like to read the, before I make the, the motion. Nolan Cemetery along Van Born is part of the original land purchase made-
Would you please move that mic closer to you? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I apologize.
That's okay. That's okay.
You didn't know it was turned off.
I'm glad when somebody tells me I have to talk louder.
Okay.
Nolan Cemetery along Van Born is part of the original land purchase made by the Nolan family in 1833. Interned on the site are generations of the Nolan family lineage, along with other settlers from the time, from that time period, including two Civil War veterans. Therefore, I am requesting that the council, I make the motion that the council designate the Nolan Cemetery a local historic site.
Second.
Second by Councilman Berry. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
May I ask a question, please?
Go right ahead, Councilman Berry.
I should have asked after the motion was made, but, Mr. McCafferty, this designation, 1930, it is 100 years. Will it, will it, will it allow them to qualify at the state level for any type of funds for their historic?
The purpose of doing so has a couple purposes. One, it helps move along the process in terms of making the state recognize it as a historic site, so that's one thing. And it does add qualifications for some grants. And both of those things are why I want to put the motion before you.
And looking at making this a historic site, are there any plans? Or what are your thoughts of maybe somehow the community contributing to that site?
Well, in terms of, you know, contributions to, you know, to fix up the cemetery, one of the, I have a couple lined up right now. I wanted to see how this grant went, because if, if the grant is successful, it would be, you know, a decent amount and go a long way towards fixing it. And I would sculpt what kind of a budget, you know, I could do to, you know, help improve it. So, yeah, that was, that was my initial mind.
Yeah, I think it would be a great project for a couple organizations in the city to get involved with.
Yeah.
City Beautiful Commission and whatever else.
Yeah.
And to have Civil War veterans there, I think, I think it's, it's an honor to be able to recognize that. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Director McCafferty, thank you. The next item on the agenda is from Community and Economic Development Director Ron Ammon, trade-in of a 1999 Ford Crown Victoria to Matt's Auto for repair credit.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Musket?
I, I make a motion to concur with Director Ammon, trade of 1999 Ford Crown Victoria to Matt's Auto as a repair credit, as outlined in 9J.
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Abdullah?
I had a question, I guess, okay. I had a question in regards to this. And I'm not a car expert, not by any stretch of the imagination, but in the estimate that you guys gave here, under Kelley Blue Book, it gave that the value of the car would be $1,870. But yet, in the trade-in value, it was gonna be traded in based on $1,200. I'd just like to know, primary thing, the mileage on it, and why is there such a difference? I mean, we're talking about a good, you know, 40%, 40% difference or whatever.
Yeah, if you look at the attachment, that's from when we purchased the vehicle in 2007. We got the Kelley Blue Book, just to have an idea how much to pay the city for the vehicle. It's obviously 2016, and we arranged for that amount, and we thought that was a fair amount. It was, the vehicle wasn't running. We had it towed.
What's the mileage on it right now? I'm curious.
I, I have to, I-
Roughly?
Around $100, yeah.
That's all I need to know, then.
We just did a vehicle inventory, so we don't have that number.
Thank you.
Is this, is this the old, my old car and Ruth Canfield's car?
I believe it's, it's from, we get the leftover vehicles.
Yeah, I think this oughta go in the historical museum.
Yeah, we can put it with the Nolan Cemetery historical, uh, project there. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Councilman Berry?
I'd like to note that we need the comptroller to sign off on the title. I'm gonna authorize the comptroller, Vince McCary to sign.
Adopt that amendment.
When you say as outlined, that's included, would you imagine?
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kozinski?
There are a couple of things that I noticed. I'd be interested to know whether, this is the first time that we've ever done this to give a operator of a repair shop an automobile for future credit?
I'm not aware of any other city department has done it with a vehicle. We, and what I remember, we've done it a couple times in community development with other items, where we traded or, you know, for reimbursement for services of items, so that, we're not selling it outright. We don't have to deal with program income or money changing hands. It was for in-kind services. We've done it a couple times over the years in community development, but I, I don't recall doing it with a vehicle in community development. But I, I don't just remember from my time being there that we've done it with a vehicle.
Is that, Mr. Chairman? I find this to be, what's the right term, a little bit of unorthodox in relinquishing a car to a repair shop for credit of future repairs on other cars. Now, one of the things that were troublesome for me when I first read it is that we really don't know where the funding, where the money will go for this credit. Will it go to the, to the general fund, or will it go to, to community development? And secondly, if this, if this is a precedent-setting step, I would much rather go through the old system to have situations like this come before the council and authorize them, rather than relinquish a car. We don't know who is going to get the credit on, on future repairs, and that is going to complex and make it difficult for transfers of where the money is going to be spent and what department is going to take credit for it and what department does not get credit for. In addition to that, I don't know if you have an answer for that, but the, the original vehicle that Councilman Abdullah raised some questions on, about a 40% differential when it was purchased in 2007, was a 1998 Crown Victoria. The vehicle, it was presumably put into the hands of a repair shop, was a 1999 Crown Victoria. So there's, there's, there's a difficulty of understanding what kind of vehicle actually was delivered to for that credit. And it makes me wonder whether, whether there are any violations in the manner of accounting, I'm calling on the accounting buffs, as to whether this can be done in a public corporation. There's something to be said about sales tax also. The city doesn't pay sales tax, but in the, in the transfer, there might be some expenses of transferring, which I think in this kind of setup is being avoided, and can we be called to task on it?
Councilman Berry?
Yes, a couple things, Councilman. The transaction that we see is very, very common, is a very common transaction. Trade in lieu of services occur all the time. So I don't think it's unorthodox, but I understand your- Um, so, I don't think it's unorthodox, but I understand your question, and I will say that this vehicle, although your Kelly Blue Book, I want you to understand, there's a couple things that fall in place here, because first of all, Matt's Collision charges us a far less rate for hourly services than any repair shop that is out there in the market. In the marketplace, you're on average eighty-five, ninety-five dollars per man hour for labor. This guy's at fifty-five dollars per man hour labor. I don't know, even though the Kelly Blue Book shows this at eighteen hundred, I'd be very surprised if you got thirteen hundred for this vehicle on the open market.
Especially if it's not running.
Pardon me?
Especially if it's not running.
And there are, I'm sure, repairs that have to be made to it before they could sell it, but honestly, when I looked at this, I questioned it at first, and then I saw Matt's Auto service, and I know on the upside, I think the city is benefiting from this significantly in lieu of that trade, but yeah-
Mr. Chairman, I'm not questioning the, uh, the, uh, Matt pricing or the agreement of getting work done. I, I'm understanding that, that, that's not, that the principle of, of taking this in hand the way it is being done, to me, is, uh, is a new experience, I've never seen this before.
Yeah, in the industry, it happens often.
If you say, if you say that it's happening with some regularity, then, then accept that as, uh, fact that, uh, there might not be anything inappropriate about it, but I, uh, the discrepancy in, in the, in the years, uh-
Value.
Uh, the value therein is some difficult for me, is difficult for me to accept.
And you spoke about the tax value on it as well. Matt's Collision, if he takes this vehicle, he's going to take it, and let's say that he dismembers it for parts, so those parts are for resale, and because it's going to be a resale item, there's no tax on it.
Okay. Mayor, you-
Well, uh, the way that the bartering transaction will be done, the way that the accounting ought to be done on it, so, that's not going to be a problem. In fact, um, it's not uncommon, I mostly audited large corporations, and a lot of them will not do bartering, but amongst smaller businesses, and that I'm well aware of, is if you have a bakery, and I have, um, a restaurant, it's not that unusual for businesses to set up an arrangement in which you get some food, I give some, you some baked food, and we, or you give me, and, and it's a bartering arrangement, that's very common. The, the key component in what the IRS and regulations require is that the accounting be done, and at least from our side, we will do it fine. I'm assuming that, uh, the only person that gets this repair credit, though, is CDBG. I don't want, uh, to start murking the waters and having police and anybody else. This is your credit and for your repair, and that's how it should be recorded. I don't want to commingle the accounts.
There, uh, Mr. Chairman, that's precisely one of the questions, is that, uh, who is going to take advantage of, of the credit, however small it is? If it's going to be kept in the Community and Economic Development Department, that's fine and good, but if you begin to jump around to, and do it-
I'm not for that, and I, I don't want to get in complications because CDBG money bought this vehicle.
It says right on here.
It ought to stay in your department.
Correct.
And, and that, and I, my guess is because, uh, I'm a little familiar with Matt's, he does a lot of work, I think, Councilman, you're absolutely correct, he's going to use, break it down and use it as parts, because if this is the vehicle I drove, and, uh, Councilman Horvath, you might remember it, but it had a, you get over sixty miles an hour, and the, and the thing would shimmy, and I thought the front end. So, when the vehicle went to CDBG, I told him, you don't go on conferences and everything, this is only a vehicle to drive at, you know, don't even use telegraph if you can avoid it, because that car was, it, I don't know what happened to it, but it was, uh-
So, we're disposing a city property, and we're, it's, you know, getting, but what do you, does any comments on the, the Blue Book that's attached versus the, what we're getting for it?
That, that car, I wouldn't have given you two hundred dollars for it when I was driving it ten years ago, so I, I don't think it's, we're forced to-
No, that's not to question at all. I'm, I'm not questioning the, the Blue Book value or the value that was assigned to the previous car. Uh, there are other considerations that I'm making, and one of them, Mayor, just clearly pointed out, is that we don't want to mix-
Yep.
The, the usable credit between two different departments.
Mr. Chairman.
Especially with the HUD money.
Joe.
Uh, Councilwoman Horvath?
It says right on Matt's, uh, invoice, or whatever you want to call this, um, twelve hundred dollars for repair, any C, well, CEDD vehicle.
Good point, good point, excellent point.
It says, right there, that, that's, that's what it'll be.
Excellent point.
We had them specify that, so that there wouldn't be a confusion.
The whole statement, I guess we're splitting-
Here's.
If you got some, uh, trade for above vehicle amount, twelve hundred dollars for repair, I, I think that's any, CEDD vehicle, and then that's, that's followed by city government. See, there, there's an implication here that any car, including the CED, any car in city government and the CEDD can take benefit of, of the credit, but, uh-
And then it says out-of-state sale, exempt from sales tax, so if he's going to sell it out of state, but anyway, that's, any further discussion?
Let's call for the question.
I can answer the ninety-eight, ninety-nine question, I have the original, uh, application for title, and as you know, sometimes you buy in the fall, it was sold in November of ninety-eight, and it's a ninety-nine model year vehicle, so, that's for clarification.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any further discussion?
Well, if, I think it'll nail down to the fact, if, whenever, when a repair occurs, based on the credit that's available for that repair, let's get a VIN number, and that VIN number will be tied to a specific department, and that'll clear, for me, it'll clear the, clear the air.
Good, good idea. But, any further discussion? Hearing none, it's been moved and supported, and all those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is item nine K from Public Service Director Administrator Bill Zimmer, computer purchases.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Move, City Council concur and approve the purchase of two desktop computers and one laptop computer per the attached quota from Alfa Level Incorporated, uh, with the city of Dearborn Heights, with the city of Dearborn Heights contract pricing as outlined in nine K.
Second. Second by Councilman Musket, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, also from Public Service Director Bill Zimmer, uh, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen Water Main Improvement Program.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move the council concur with Public Service Director Bill Zimmer with regard to the Appleton Change Order, uh, affecting a decrease in, um, the final reconciliation of the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen Water Main Improvement Program, and also to improve, uh, Change Order Number Fourteen, uh, in the amount of two hundred five thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty cents, including, uh, the decrease of Change Order Number Seven. All according to the definitions defi, uh, found in nine L over the signature of Bill Zimmer dated March thirty of two thousand sixteen.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, also from Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer, Appleton Avenue Water Main Improvement Recommendation of Award.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
I move to concur with Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer and award the contract for the Appleton Avenue Water Main Improvement from Ann Arbor Trail to Joy Road to Lawrence M. Clark, the amount of five hundred seventy-three thousand, four hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and establish a construct, excuse me, construction engineering budget for Wade Trim, the amount of sixty thousand as outlined in nine M.
Second. Second by Councilman Kozinski, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
And nobody is opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda from Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer, fund transfer.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move, council concur with the request of Bill Zimmer, uh, of a fund transfer of six thousand dollars, uh, as indicated in, uh, nine N dated April four, two thousand sixteen.
Is there support?
Mr. Chairman, that should be five thousand dollars, we could support that with the five thousand, please.
At five thousand?
Yeah.
Lucky all people can see good.
I don't know if that-
Uh, is there support?
Yes, sir, with the five thousand, yes, support.
Support. Uh, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is from Corporation Council, Gary Miatki, request for proposal for waste hauling contract.
Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Am I to suggest that we move this to a study session?
So, move it, chairman.
Uh, you may.
Please.
Is there support for?
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to move item nine O to a study session, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, none, the ayes have it.
Is it likely for next Tuesday, or?
We got the budget, um, we'll get it on as soon as possible.
Okay.
Mayor?
When does the contract expire?
October, I believe.
October thirty-first, two thousand sixteen.
Is, is that enough time? I mean, how much time are we going to need for this?
I think Chrissy would be able to address it.
I didn't hear-
She feels six months.
The one, the one concern is if we go with a new company, they gotta buy trucks, and so consequently, the longer we wait, the more difficultly it will be if we go with a new hauler.
Let's do it next Tuesday.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath?
I have a question, although I voted yes, which I shouldn't have. Why are we going into a study session on this? This is a request for-
Is this RFP?
Yeah. So, we're going to look at this, I'm sure we're not all going to read this, and what are we going to talk about in a study session?
Good point.
This is the package that's going to go out to Rizzo and-
Waste Management Republic.
Waste Management and all the, this package. I, I for one, am not going to look at this and say, oh, we need to change that sentence, because I know nothing about it. So, why are we having a study session?
One at a time, you, go ahead, go ahead, finish.
So, my question is, why are we having a study? The sooner we get to South, the quicker we get action on it.
Yeah, we got the, so, anyone want to make a motion?
I do, I got to rescind my motion.
Okay, Councilman Berry.
But, may I ask, Corporate Council has already reviewed this, correct?
Yes, there are just a few items, however, that need to be clarified with, probably with the, the treasurer and Chrissy and Bill, that are in here in terms of submission dates, and some issues regarding numbers that we need to include in here. But other than that, other than those minor things, this is, this is ready to go and extremely comprehensive.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to approve the RFP, um, as outlined on nine O, contingent upon, uh, the review and clarification by Corporate Council.
And withdraw your prior motion.
And withdraw my prior motion.
Is there support?
Second.
Second by Councilman Musket, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
Will the, uh, review of the RFP influence at all, uh, the possibility of the number of contractors, or, or, uh, a select group of contractors that we want to touch with, that will give us and deliver us the kind of service that we're expecting?
Um, it, it seems to me that the more time that they have, the more likely it is that you're going to be able to attract, uh, possible, um, firms that would end up providing these types of services.
Very competitive bids, yeah. Yeah, the sooner we, it sounds like I agree with Councilwoman Horvath, that the sooner we get it out, the better, and if, if there's going to be discussion, and it's not going to be with the council people, just as Councilwoman Horvath said, we're going to look at it and say, yeah, so we, we've got to get it out for bid. Councilman Abdullah?
I, I for one personally would like to look at it, because we were given this before the, just before the meeting, and I, I, I don't know, I'd just like to read it first before we go ahead and move forward, in my particular opinion.
Any, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
Uh, there were two motions, this now supersedes the previous one, should we rescind that first motion to the-
He did.
He did.
He did, okay.
Mr. Chairman, just to point out, the, the key components of this is that we're going to go to the barrels like Dearborn and some of our neighbors have, so, uh, garbage bags will no longer be permitted unless you stick them in the container, um, and so we think this is going to have a major impact on rat control and also keeping the neighborhoods cleaner. And, uh, the other thing is, uh, because we go to the containers, we're expecting the bids to come in with not two people on a truck, but the one-arm truck, so later on, uh, those are the major significant items, I believe, in this particular agreement. As has been brought to me in the neighboring communities, we might have to do some restriction of people parking their vehicles in front of the house, especially on garbage day. But, I think that's generally recognized as part of the thing.
But, Garden City has the, the barrels, Ruth Republic, Dearborn.
Yep.
And it, it should save some money because it's less manpower.
We're expecting it, the new thing is, is that, uh, the, the cost of the containers, and so it'll be interesting to see what kind of bids we get. Our neighbors have gone out for bids, and most of them have gotten very good prices, they're actually, they actually got prices lower than what we're paying, so we, we think this is a really good, uh, thing. And, the key is going to be when these bids come in, and then the council will make the actual selections. We'll make a recommendation, but the council has the final say on who we use as a waste-
Now, any further discussion, Councilman Kozinski?
Councilman Abdullah made a point of wanting to review the details of this RFP. Does the RFP address, and, and therein is a value of looking at it before making any decisions, does the RFP address, uh, a problem that I see in certain areas of people bringing business garbage into their residential area and using the residential receptacles to dispose of their trash from another area? How, is that addressed?
We have ordinances that prohibit that, so you work, you, you, you remove carpet, and so, the guy comes, the person comes home and throws all the carpet, he's got eight barrels of carpet in front of his house.
I'm looking beyond that, and beyond my personal living room carpeting being out there, there, there are some other areas, it's-
Yeah.
If, if, if I may, the, uh, construction materials are not supposed to be, and are accepted from this bid. There are some things that are a little different, um, I have notes on the things, but there's quite a few of them. Uh, if you were to look at this more closely, really, pages eleven through thirty would be the pages that you would really be looking at, because a lot of it is, as, as Councilwoman Horvath said, stuff that you probably would not even want to look at, even if you were a lawyer who was hard up to read stuff for hours. I mean, this is very intense, very comprehensive, I took stuff from prior agreements, I took stuff from the stuff that Chrissy gave me, and I basically put together, you know, thirty-nine page document that covers everything and is about as stilted in favor as the city is it could possibly be without someone potentially ending up saying, well, I'm not going to put in a quote on this. So, um, but it, but it essentially, the, the main things I would end up saying are, I've addressed a few items, for example, billing stuff, making sure that any trucks that are used are only going to be used for the city, making sure that they're identifiable to the city, uh, everything's staying the same in terms of scheduling. Um, we have a few, uh, other improvements in terms of complaints, the complaint procedure, but generally have the same complaint procedure, uh, that we've had before, and the same sort of responsiveness within twenty-four hours of a complaint. Um, had, the, the city will have the right to reject any and all quotes that end up being put in. The city will have the right to reject any and all quotes that end up being put in. Essentially, we have, there are going to be some ordinance changes that are gonna probably be needed with respect to going to the auto side collection, which is what we're talking about when we're talking about the carts. And of course, everything is in part contingent, we're looking at a five-year term potential, optional, eight years, but everything with the CWCSA, the Central Wayne County Sanitation Authority, takes priority, and this body would not need to, and the city would not have to, end up accepting any sort of eight-year agreement, and no one would have to end up putting a quote with regard to that. That's an option that would be out there. There... I'm sorry?
Recycling?
Recycling is also provided for as auto side recycling.
So that's five years and then an additional three?
Additional five, at the option of the city to extend.
So it's...
So it could be a five-year optional, you can put in five years if you're a quoter, you have to put in five, and then you can put in for eight if you also want to put in that, but the city may or may not choose to do that, and then there would be a five-year extension over the five years at the city's option.
Okay.
The eight was put in because that...
You gotta either come up or get the microphone, because I can't hear you.
The eight years was put in on, A, because it extends the costs of the actual bins, but it was also put in because it coincides with the expiration, well, this is not month for month, but the expiration, the CWCSA contract that we're currently under, so that's where we were required to take our yard waste and compost to a certain place, so it's kinda puts it together where it wouldn't be an overlap.
There are a couple of other things, if I... I mean, since we're talking about them, I don't know that you want to hear them, but if you don't, tell me to shut up, please. But one of the other things is, there would be no limitation on yard waste, bulk items, or mixed trash, that would all be included in the underlying quote. So that's something to take into account. However, with respect to bulk items, there'll be a new mechanism in place to make sure that if there are bulk items, that the city has a way to basically recoup that cost from whoever is responsible for those bulk item mass disposals, as they're referred to in here. In other words, evictions, foreclosures, things along those lines, the property would all have to be tagged, the city would have to end up being notified, and then...
For special pickup, like, for example?
Well, for a pickup for that, for those items, and then they would pick them up. We would get billed in a different procedure, and then we would figure out a mechanism to turn around to, say, the landlord or whoever else decided to end up causing us to otherwise have to eat all of this cost that's attributable to them evicting a tenant, for example.
Yeah, they redo their kitchen, and there's a dishwasher, and a refrigerator, and a stove, because they went all with...
Or a landlord evicts a tenant.
Yeah, and, you know, so we can recover that stuff.
Mr. Chairman. Councilwoman Horvath?
I don't know the answer to this question, if anybody knows. Are all the containers the same size, or can you have small, medium, large? I've had a couple of elderly people say, "If you get the 96 gallon, it's gonna take them a year to fill it up," and I, you know, jokingly, but if you...
You can get a smaller one, they do have them available, they have them in all communities, they don't... Most people just take the 96 gallons, but if they call for special, they do have those available. That's all post-contract, though, all three contractors, the large firms, Republic, Rizzo, and Wade Trim, do have that as an option, where you can take the smaller one, which is like the recycling one, which is just a little bigger than what we have now.
Okay.
Councilman Kozinski.
Yes, sir. Another question, does the RFP address a standard size that will not accommodate a household quantity of garbage that is put out at the curb? Is there an additional charge for excess?
There is, well...
By the resident?
Yeah, basically, the resident would end up having to get the additional carts.
Okay.
Okay? But that doesn't necessarily mean that they would end up bearing that additional charge, just so we're understood. One other thing that's unique about this is after the first, I believe it's 18 months, the city would have the option to also terminate with or without cost, so that if we end up having a problem, then we're not gonna have that problem. And if there's a problem with respect to billing, and they make an error, and they don't notify us within one year, then they eat that cost.
Can I just add to that, too?
So I added in a number of things to...
Please loudly, go ahead and add to it.
Yes, that, sorry, that 18-months clause, that's a new thing with the communities, but there's also an annual basis that we sit down with the contractor and discuss the actual number of homes. We didn't have that in the prior agreements, where we can sit down with the assessors with the water main, we have different ways of sitting down. In 2008, when there was a lot of vacant homes, we kinda argued with Waste Management, maybe our costs should come down a little. Now we have a way of getting a more accurate count of the homes, it's not just for the extension of the agreement, whoever we decide to go with, so. And there's an annual, like, there's like something that actually states there. While we kinda had a six-month talk with Waste Management, this is right in the contract to make it more official.
Any further discussions? Councilman Abdullah?
I just want to go on record in stating that I'm in full, full, full favor of this, so I don't want to give the impression that I'm not in favor of this, I just, I'm just not comfortable in voting on something without reading it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of Councilman Barry's motion to rescind the prior motion and to concur with Corporation Council Miatki and approve the request for proposal for waste hauling contract, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is a resolution for charitable gaming license from the Lennon Pregnancy Center on Ann Arbor Trail in Dearborn Heights, and...
I would have gone after the RFP, they approved it.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath?
Can I ask the clerk a question?
Please do.
Um, I hope I'm not putting you on the spot, but what are they actually asking for here? I mean, it doesn't say when, where, what, it just says that they want a resolution for charitable gaming license. I'm not understanding...
Every day of the week?
There is a attached letter, I don't know if we attached it, but this is required by the state of Michigan to have a resolution from the council to approve this, for them to even apply for the license. So, they do not have a definitive plan, they don't have a site, they don't even know whether they're going to do it in Dearborn Heights, to tell you the truth, but they wanted to cover their bases ahead of time, and this is something that the state would require. For the chair, my understanding is, there's certain groups that run charitable, and they want to see if that would be something they would want to hook into, but they can't get to second base to actually rent a haul till the state gives them the license, so...
I haven't seen one of these in a very long time.
I mean, we do the Texas Hold'em, and that's what this is all about.
Yes.
But I don't think we came to council for permission.
We never had a, yeah, we never had a...
No.
Well, they're applying to the state, and I apologize, they're applying to the state, and before they can apply to the state, they need council approval for it.
Okay, that's okay.
But giving, but, excuse me, Mr. Chair, if we approve this, that means they can hold one whenever they want without...
No.
They still have to get approval of the state.
The state is totally regulated by the state.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we've never seen, we have charitable gaming with Qantas, we've never seen this step.
Mr. Chairman. Is there a motion? Go ahead.
Would receive, note in file, put the matter disadvantaged.
Yes, they need approval.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Barry.
I move city council, I move city council approve the resolution attached on 11A.
Is there support?
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski, any discussion? Already had the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please state "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is a resolution supporting the Dearborn Heights Tax Increment Finance Authority, the TIFAs.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
I move that the city council adopt the resolution, objecting to proposed legislation that would negatively impact tax increment financing for city improvements, as outlined in 11B.
Second.
Second by Councilman Musket, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
I want to thank, there's several people that were instrumental in drafting this resolution. I serve on the Michigan Municipal League, the Municipal Services Committee, and this has come across our table several times in past years as well, where there is a question of reform in limiting the TIFAs. I want to thank Tom Roscoe, who met with me to work on some of the wording, as well as the Michigan Municipal League, to be one of the first municipalities to bring something forward so comprehensive. I did attach the Dearborn Heights TIFA contributions that we can clearly see have been impactful in our community, to say the least, whether it's infrastructure repairs, ADA complacency, everything from, as well as our bonds for John F. Kennedy Library and the Justice Center. Currently, there are work groups in Lansing that are discussing not allowing for bond payments to come out of TIFA funds, and that would certainly hurt our community quite a bit. So again, I thank all those individuals, because there were a lot of people involved in this, and I appreciate all of their time and their input.
Councilman Barry, thank you.
I'd like to get some clarification on this. If I'm not mistaken, didn't the state or the county attempt to capture those TIFA funds back a few years ago, and we wound up in court with them?
Yeah, we lost.
No, no, actually.
No, wait a minute, though.
Wayne County?
They changed the law.
They changed the law.
Yeah.
My question to this is that, with the law being changed, what does this resolution accomplish for us? They're trying it again, I think.
They're trying again, and there's a work group that's very aggressive at tailoring back what we're gonna be able to do. For example, if you think about the fact, we can't make bond payments out of TIFA, which right now, the Justice Center, as well as John F. Kennedy Library, come directly out of there. So that would be a big concern, and again, I just look, and when people say, "Well, what's the point of a resolution?" I don't know if that's really what the question is, but I can tell you, advocacy, being an advocate, that's the purpose of a resolution. It is your voice that does go to your representatives in Lansing, as well as the governor, and through MML, so they are obviously advocates for us as well. So I do support, encourage your support for this item, because we're trying to be more proactive, because it doesn't do any good to be reactive after a law has already been passed, and things move quickly in Lansing sometimes, without public hearing.
So the people that hear our voice, legislators, have moved to cut back on what TIFA money can be used for, and to cut back, thinking that it's...
What it's done is, what this is doing is just stating our position as a city.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we support the TIFAs.
In favor of the TIFAs.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I might, I received a quick call from our state senator today in which there is proposed legislation that, in the state senate, and you having been up there like I have, he was wondering whether or not he ought to be a sponsor or a signature, I assume the senate works the same way as the House, on those blueback things, where he'd become a co-sponsor. So, I told the senator, I'd be more than happy to look at it and check with our TIFA operation, let them get a look at it and give you a response tomorrow. To my surprise, at about 4:30, 4:45, I got 103 pages, and there's no way that I was able to even approach that. And in fact, I'm gonna ask my assistant, because of those legislative summaries that we used to use when we're up there, if she could get one of those, or multiple, because I think there's more than one piece of legislation. So this is very ripe right now. I apologize, but I didn't get notice of this till the last minute. We might even wanted to have looked at some support or disapproval of that proposed legislation that's coming through the senate. So it's a very hot topic right now. I would hope that we'll agree with some of that legislation, and would have liked to have come back to the proposal, but that all happened this afternoon, so there was no way to put something on the particular agenda. So, and I don't think, I talked to you briefly before, you haven't seen the legislation, so...
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please state "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is a resolution honoring the 50th anniversary of the Falcon Marching Band of Divine Child High School.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with Chairman Robert Coniston to prepare the appropriate document honoring the 50th anniversary of the Divine Child Marching Band.
Is there support?
Second.
Second. Second by Councilman Musket, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please state "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, it occurs to me that this resolution is from the council. Should we add the principal officers of the city in this?
If you would, I'd love to be part of it, probably the treasurer, the clerk would also.
I think if there are no objection to the support, I think that they ought to be added to the resolution.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is item 13A, business license renewals for Uncle Ray's Place and Leo's Coney Island, Warren Valley, Traktion Bar. Councilman Barry.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Before I make the motion on this, I know that it was suggested at one time, we look at a base fee for all licenses in the city, ask the administration if we're anywhere near that.
Not at the moment, but that's what we're moving towards.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the licenses for Uncle Ray's Place, Warren Valley Golf Course, Leo's Coney Island, Traktion Bar and Grill, La Marina Auto Sales, Carina's...
Carrera's Kitchen.
Carrera's, yes.
Cucina.
Thank you. And Ford Lanes, as outlined in 13A.
Is there support?
Second.
Second by Councilman Musket, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Musket.
Oh, I think the question's for the clerk.
I thought it was Joe.
I thought the Councilman Kozinski seconded it.
Well, no, the question, he's got a question.
Yeah, but you said Councilman Musket.
For the question.
Yeah, when you addressed, Mr. Chairman, you addressed Mr. Musket with regard to a question he had, but I supported that resolution.
Yes, it was supported by Councilman Kozinski. Are all these businesses concurrent with everything?
They are.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I found it interesting, when you review all these licenses, that each one of them is tagged with a 25% late fee, and it takes just as much effort to go around a second time as it is the first, to get these, get the compliance that we need with regard to city licensing. That said, I wonder if the late fee is a little soft on getting compliance, and it's just double the original license fee to a point where we will get response in the first time around, rather than play the game a second time, or a third time, for that matter.
That's something the clerk and the mayor's obviously want to look at.
You said they were all charged 25% late fee?
Sure.
Where?
No, they're not charged, there's a warning of 25%.
There's a statement here that says, "Please know, all late fee is 25%." I don't think anybody's late here.
All right, I stand corrected, and it's late.
Warned out.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please state "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. That ends the business portion of our meeting. Any announcements?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, I have three announcements this evening. One is on behalf of the Crestwood Drama Department, they are presenting Little Mermaid, the musical, and the dates of the performances are April 22nd, 23rd, 28th, 29th, and 30th, at 7:00 PM at Crestwood High School. There is a free senior citizen show on April 21st at noon. They also want to invite everyone to have breakfast with Ariel, who's one of the...
They also want to invite everyone to have breakfast with Ariel, who's one of the main characters, on Saturday, April 16th, from 10 to 12, and that will be at Our Savior Church, 610 North Beach Daily. Cost is $6 a person, so come out and have breakfast with some of the cast, as well as attend one of the shows. The second announcement I wanted to share, council chair Bob Coniston, myself, had an opportunity, I know other council members have had this opportunity in the past, to go to Fire Ops 101. We did that this weekend, it was really cold and snowy, but I wanted to say thank you, Fire Chief Dave Brogan, as well as Deputy Chief Vasco Badlo, and the firefighters of our Union 1355 for an engaging and informative Dearborn Heights Fire Ops 101. The experience taught me a great value, the great value of staffing, equipment, and resources. A vibrant community depends on healthy essential services. So again, thanks for the men, women, what you do to keep our community safe, especially our local first responders. Really appreciate that, it was very enlightening. A little cold, but it was good, so I want to say thank you. The last announcement I have, my third one, is the US Census Bureau data indicates women make 77 cents to every dollar that a man earns. And according to the Institute for Women's Policy Research, women in Michigan won't earn as much as men until the year 2086. So on this day, and this day is Pay Equity Day, we must continue to work hard on solving the issue. Legislators at all levels of government, including local, must pass laws designed to help close the wage gap between men and women. Thank you.
Any other announcements?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Yeah, I wasn't going to mention anything, but I think, I think it's important to note to all the Crestwood people that this coming Sunday, Dearborn, the Dearborn Sports Authority is going to be inducting your coach, Mike Berry, into the Dearborn Sports Hall of Fame, along with his assistant coach, John Al. It's, I mean, it's not a state, it's not a state recognition, but within the city, it's big. Just a little background on your coach, Mike. Mike graduated from Dearborn Forts, and I believe it was in 1971 or '72, a state championship. He went up to Northern Michigan and played with Steve Mariucci, where they won several championships. He came back and coached at Waterford and took Waterford from a 0-11, I think it was, season to an undefeated season and a state championship. So I think that his indoctrination into that Dearborn, Dearborn Hall of Fame, Sports Hall of Fame, is well deserved, along with his assistant coach, who does it on a volunteer basis. John Al graduated from Forts and as well, and has been very active with the Little League football teams in Dearborn. He was instrumental in putting that together. He played at Kent State, and now he volunteers on his own time with Dearborn Heights. So you have two quality people there with a ton of experience, and I know that team has somewhat turned around, and it's just nice to see that the kids have faith and confidence and trust in that program right now. So to the Crestwood Board of Directors, or the school board, nice job.
Athletic.
Athletic director, nice job. It was a good selection, and I'm sure it'll be, it'll pay off in the long run.
Just to add to that, I think that's a stepping stone to the state Athletic Hall of Fame.
I hope so.
The guy, he has credentials that are astonishing for a high school coach.
Great, great. Any other announcements, Mayor?
Just three real quick ones. First off, we're missing somebody who's always sitting towards the back of the camera there, but Bob Bancrap, who does our emergency management, unfortunately fractured both legs, and one of the legs compounded wise, I believe, at the fire that took, that happened over the weekend. So he had to have some surgery, please remember him in your prayers. And Bob, we hope you get well quickly and are back with us. Couple other quick announcements. I want to publicly thank Michael McCaffrey. We used to have a very active historical society, and there are quite a bit of archives and other things. He has been willing to take on that task, and so we've had a couple people who have come forward recently. They're sons and daughters of original founders of the city, and there's a treasury of pictures, and we are going to get those very soon. Although I must tell you, while I used to sit as a high school student out in the audience and watch council meetings, there are people in those pictures, I have no idea who they are. So, but I'm glad that Michael's going to take care of those for us and keep the past in existence. Lastly, I'd like to thank the Our Savior Church, it's a Polish National Catholic Church. They celebrated their 100th anniversary as a church last weekend. I was pleased that they invited me to their occasion, and I guess it's only appropriate, stola, another 100 years that they exist. So those are the three announcements.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Musket.
I just want to say kudos to getting Haas fixed, been a long time coming. But I've got a question, I guess I could direct this to Mr. Zimmer. Is there any plans on fixing the other streets in that, like would be west of Beach Daily, the ones that are blacktop? Like, I was at my mom's house trying to do some cleanup, and I swept up 30, 40 pounds of asphalt on Fairwood Street, and it's delaminated so bad, I don't understand what's going on with that street. It's horrible.
Yeah, we can have plans. I mean, it's kind of depressing that we can't do them all at once.
Well, and I understand, but I mean...
But we do a pretty good job and a pretty thorough job of prioritizing the worst, and unfortunately, the worst ones have to go first. When we have, you know, sufficient funds to do a, you know, a sizable project, that also falls under that guideline.
What do we do with the stuff when we sweep it up? It's so bad, I mean, where do we get rid of it at? I mean, you can't bag it. You're trying to clean up a little bit, and the more you sweep, the more asphalt comes up. Now, there's gotta be a two and a half foot by 12, 14 feet long spot where there's no asphalt at all, it's all the way down into concrete.
Maybe enlarge your patio in your backyard, or...
No, this is the front of the house, okay? It'd be a good, yeah, if I had a way to do it, I probably could do that, but it's just, it's got no place to put it, you know?
Yeah, give me a call, we can talk about it.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Clerk?
Since we last met here, we have sent out the absentee ballots for the May 3 election for Crestwood in District 7. If you requested one more than a week ago and have not got it, please call our office, 791-3432. We will make sure you get a replacement ballot. They do get lost in the mail. Also, on, on May the 3rd, please be aware you will be voting at your regular precincts. So Crestwood, precincts 5 through 18, you will be voting. For instance, if you vote at Berwyn, you will vote at Berwyn. In the South End, if you vote at Bedford, you will be voting there. There will be no central location for polls. Lastly, I mentioned that we want to start some education for the upcoming elections. What we have here is a two-page piece of paper, upcoming elections. Michigan primary on Tuesday, August 2nd, and the presidential on November the 8th. Just briefly, this will be available in the Dearborn Heights today. It's available at my office. We have a board outside our office with a lot of election material, precinct maps, and I will put this on our website in the very near future. Just for instance, I am not a registered voter. How do I register? All that information is here. Now that I'm registered, where do I vote? Can I see a sample of my ballot? This is very important, folks. We get a lot of people who go to the wrong polls, especially presidential. So there's a website where you can put in your name and your birthday, and it'll tell you where your poll is and where you vote, and a sample ballot. You can't write that down that quick. It will be scrolling across the bottom of your screen. There's a link from our website to that site where you can find out where you vote. It's very important you go to the right precincts. What do I need to be able to vote at the polls? That answer is here. Can I vote absentee rather than at the polls? That requirements are here. Do I have to vote for each and every office proposal on the ballot? Importantly, there's a section that says, "I heard something about a law change in straight party voting. Can you explain that?" It's here. And finally, will there be long lines, and is there anything I should do before going to the polls? So what we are doing is suggesting, especially for the presidential, you be prepared. Know what precinct you're at, take a cheat sheet with you, know who you're going to vote for ahead of time, and that will lessen the lines. So this is the start of our voter education, hopefully. If anybody has a newsletter, a civic organization, they would be willing to share this with them. We would be forever grateful. If anybody wants me to come and talk to any of your groups concerning the upcoming elections, I would be more than excited to do so. Once again, any questions regarding elections, 791-3432. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Any other announcements? I too attended the Fire Ops Training 101, and it gave great insight into not only what firefighters, their job, what they have to do, but the equipment they use, and how important it is to have updated equipment to save lives. And then I'll announce that Saturday, April 23rd, starting at 9:00 AM, is the 23rd Annual E-course Creek Cleanup, sponsored by the Watershed Stewards Commission at the Swapka Park, right next to the Richard A. Young Center. And we have flyers here, and for those elected officials, sponsorships are available. So we hope everybody who's able can come out and help us out. Mike? Director McCafferty?
Well, hello, council chair and mayor. Just wanted to talk about a couple of upcoming events. Saturday, April 23rd, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Carolyn Kennedy Library, we will have a library pet adoption drive. Join us as A Better Place Animal Rescue and Lake Erie Metro Animal Rescue brings some of their animals by for potential adoption. So come on by and go home with a furry friend. Also, Wednesday, April 27th, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM at Carolyn Kennedy Library, join us along with the Silver String Dulcimer Society for a presentation and performance of unusual instruments. These instruments will include the musical saw, the nail violin, the osarina, the marxophone, the sotera, the Scandinavian salmodicon. Boy, did I hope I pronounced that right. These will all be shown and discussed. That's all for now, and thank you for your time, and see you at the library.
Mike, thank you. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Chrissy, please come up to the microphone, please.
We also have a library book sale next Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Almost forgot. Thank you very much, Chrissy, for reminding me. So book sale will be next Thursday from 10 to 8, Friday from 10 to 5, and Saturday from 10 to 5, so come on out. Got a lot of stuff to sell, a lot of stuff packed in the closet, and...
Where will it be at? It'll be at both libraries?
It's going to be at Carolyn Kennedy Library.
Carolyn Kennedy Library, here in the North End.
Okay.
Thank you, Director McCafferty.
All right, thank you.
Any other announcements? Okay, hearing none, any members of the public, any comments? Please step up to the microphone and give me your name and your street you live on. You have to come up to the podium, sir.
My name is Ron Frenzy, and I live over on Fairwood Street, near Mr. Muscat's mother. Just about seven houses south of that. And I'd like to just talk about three things. One is a little bit about the potholes. Second thing is about some interesting things that other cities are doing that maybe this city could do. And the third thing is some great news for the whole city that you may not know at all.
Go ahead.
So with the, with the potholes, last year I came before a city council to see if they could repair the potholes on Fairwood, and nothing was done. This year, 12 days ago, the city came and repaired some of the potholes that were roughly about 100 to 200 square inches, which is about the size of a basketball. In front of my house, one pothole was 4,320 square inches, and one is 9,000 square inches. And I have actually photos of that, what it looks like. Between my house and Mr. Muscat's mother's house, there's five houses that have potholes 50,000 square inches. I measured it. So if you add that up, it's 260,000 square inches. How can you miss that when they came 12 days ago? I don't know. I don't know. How can you miss, how can you miss 260,000 square inches but you can find 100 to 200 square inches? I don't know.
If you would, maybe you can show those photos to our DPW director, Bill Zimmer, who's here. We'll see if we can't make sure that somebody gets out there and looks at those, but go ahead.
Yeah. And so, so that's a, that's a real problem. But if that was, if that was repaired, what would be really good is to have those big rollers to roll it out.
I agree with you.
Because if you just put, if you, because the fellows now just take a shovel, put it down on the street, and then they hope, truly hope that a car will go over it to smash it down. You really need one of these big rollers. The city may not have those rollers, but, but some city in this area probably does. You could probably rent it for a day, probably. Because everybody isn't using these rollers. Okay, the other thing is, down, down in the city of Wyandotte, they have, they have a couple interesting things that you may have an interest in considering. They have a flyer here that says, "Do you live in Wyandotte? Plug into our rebates." If you buy, if you buy an Energy Star monitor for your computer, you get a $15 rebate. If you buy a dehumidifier, $15 rebate. If you get an Energy Star TV, you get a $30 rebate, and so on. So they probably have a grant program where, where if you show the city somehow in the city that you bought new products that are Energy Star to save energy, then the city will give you money.
They have, Wyandotte has their own power plant.
Yeah. They're under federal and state requirements, like DTE and the other power, to have so much renewable energy. So in order for them to meet that qualification, keep their power plant, that's what they do.
But Ron, we'll pass that suggestion along to the Dearborn Area Chamber for some of our businesses.
And then another thing they do is too, if you're low income and do not have an Energy Star refrigerator, and if you have a refrigerator that's like 10 years old, we'll buy you a brand new one. It's pretty good. So that's just two ideas.
Has rebates like that.
Two ideas the city, the city has.
Yes.
A third idea is, everybody knows about up in Flint, that in Flint they had a problem with lead in the water. So the city of, the city of Wyandotte, plus the city of Dearborn Heights does a fine job. Once a year, they have a table that lists the elements, like chlorine and lead and other elements in the water, and that we're always below those limits, which is good. But what the city of Wyandotte does, this past week, they actually sent out a special letter that actually details, instead of having just a table, that actually details paragraph to paragraph what they actually did, to prove that their lead levels are lower than normal. I would suggest the city would do this, something like this, but even go one step further. I used to be a chemistry teacher, and you can, and there's a, there's a company that you can actually buy a kit to test lead. I would take these test kits, give them to the kids in chemistry in our Crestwood High School, in Annapolis High School, have them test the kits, have them test the lead, the lead levels in their, their own water in their houses, come back together, meet, write up a project, bring it before the city council, show them their results, bring in the radio and TV people, and you would have great publicity for the city. Because the students would learn something, and you, the residents would feel good that the lead levels are below acceptable levels.
So yeah, that's...
Now, the test, the test kits cost...
Also, the school board... Also the school board.
Forty, $49, and that's equal to 30 students. So I would say you could spend $200, give $100 to Crestwood, $100 to Annapolis for these test kits. And I have the phone number and the number, the information on the test kits.
You might want to pass that on to the school board, because we, we don't have any jurisdiction over the school...
No, but you could authorize the money to give to the school.
That would have to come from the school board, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'll talk to you after the meeting, bro.
Yeah. And then another thing is that, one other thing that's a great news for the city, which, which a lot of people may not know, is at 1 o'clock, it was announced that over in Dearborn, the Ford Motor Headquarters and all their engineering buildings were built in the 50s and 60s. They're going to spend 10 years, put in $2 billion to re-modernize 7 and 1/2 million square feet. Somehow, business people in Dearborn, Dearborn Heights can get some contracts out of that. I mean, surely.
Yeah, I know of you. Any, any construction will be boom to the area.
Well, yeah, but I mean, there's something that the city, the city businesses, I'm sure, could do, that it's going to go over 10 years, spend, and they're going to spend $2 billion.
I'm sure that's going to stay in-house with Ford Land.
Yeah.
Hopefully. Ford Land Development.
Yeah, any, any, any economy, the, the auto companies are a big generator.
That's all wood nickels to them at that point.
Oh, yeah. But, okay, I just, just bring it up.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments for members of the public?
Okay.
Any other comments? Hearing none? Motion to adjourn. Removed by Councilman Berry, supported by Councilman Musket. Good evening, everyone.